Philippines, good evening. May I say hello to you? 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 Well, tonight, we're going to be talking about education. Very important part of any family concern. Most especially, the nation's central existence has to do with generational education. Although the 1973 Constitution speaks specifically, section 5, Article 5, 1987 Constitution, talks about the budgetary appropriations to be given. The large chunk would be given to the education. However, we're going to try to ask, how come there is such a thing as a local school board at the city, municipal, and provincial level? Why the need for a local school board? Who are the people behind this? What are their objectives? What is their function? At the end of the day, we'll try to find out also, what is the vision for the future, specifically here, for Cebu City. So today, we're very, very fortunate to have the guy running the show, if I might say that, none other than Rady Jola of the Cebu City Local School Board. Good evening, Rady. Welcome to the program.
Thank you for having me, Eric.
Yeah. My first question is, why the need for a local school board? People always are very much aware of this, that in our constitution, the largest chunk of the appropriations, every time the Senate and Congress meets to come up with the budget for every year, is given to education. But why was there, I mean, the ethos, what's the idea? Why there is a need for a local school board?
Actually, the funds allocated for education in this country is not enough.
There you go.
So that's one of the reasons. And secondly, another reason is to, this is one way for ordinary citizens to help in education, you know, because the funds of the local school board actually come from the real property taxes. So people paying real property tax would be gratified to know that part of the taxes that they pay actually go directly to education. So those are the reasons.
Wait, you mentioned ordinary citizens. In what way is the ordinary citizens involved in the education at the local, municipal, provincial level? You're talking about the payment of the taxes?
Yes.
That's the connection?
That's right, that's right.
And then, what's the percentage?
Okay, 1/3 of the real property tax go to the local school board, the special education fund. So it's a trust fund. So 1/3 of the entire real property tax collected, yes.
In your own experience, I know you're very much involved in education, 1/3, 1%, good enough? Should be higher, as far as your experience is concerned?
Well, it's never good enough. I mean, there's always a shortfall, especially if we want to elevate our educational system to that of the first world countries, you know? So it's never enough. But, you know, we're making do with what we have right now, yes.
Who is the school board, as far as Cebu City is concerned?
Okay, give me, I'd like to give you a brief background of the local school board, the evolution of the local school board.
Okay, yes, yes.
In the 70s, the Republic Act, if I'm not mistaken, 548, was passed into law, essentially for the creation of the local school board and the special education fund. So at that time, the funds would come from, a big chunk of the funds would come from the Victoria cigarettes at that time. And then it evolved over time, of course, to improve it. And then the membership, you know, the mayor is the chairman, and then a co-chairman would be the head of the division, the schools division, which is a superintendent. And then you have other members would be the chairman of the Committee on Education from the council, chairman of the Committee on Youth. And then, of course, you have the city treasurer, you have the city administrator, you have the president of the non-teaching personnel of DEEPED. You also have the president of the PTA, the general PTA, and the president of the teaching personnel as well. So that's, those are the members of the local school board. And, of course, we invite other people to the meeting. We invite members of the NGO, representatives, during meetings and deliberation. So right now, it's, you know, funding would come fully and totally from the real property tax that Virginia Tobacco has taken out.
That was taken out?
Yeah, it was taken out, yeah. Because it's not as probably as lucrative a source as a real property tax. So real property tax at that time would be shared by the different agencies. Like, if you're a province, you have to share.
With the other municipalities?
With the other municipalities and all. Right now, it's exclusively, like, for Cebu City, the 1/3 of the real property tax would go exclusively for the special education fund. So that, in essence, is how the local school board evolved over time.
You're talking about RA 5447, which I think was passed by the Senate before. And then, I think now, under the Local Government Code, that's RA 7160, it's still there, the local school board is still there?
Yeah, it's still there, of course, it's still there. But you have to, like, for instance, several times, there'll be some clash of ideas between, let's say, the local school board and probably the COA Commission on Audit, you know? Because every time there is an issue, they would point out to the Local Government Code. And there's a section there, I think, section 221, I'm not so sure, that would state that the special education fund would go to only three items. Repair and maintenance of school buildings.
Yes.
Number two is the extension classes.
Extension classes.
And number three is for sports development, okay? So when you look at that section, you would say that it has to be limited to those three.
Yes.
But there's another section, section 100, if I'm not mistaken, that states there that the special education fund shall give priority to special, the sports development, extension classes, and repair and maintenance. So that is the key, the give priority to, which means that it does not disallow other things. Now, which other things? Then you go back to the original spirit and intent of the creation of the local school board. So you go back to RA 5448, which actually states a whole lot of things that can be funded by the special education fund. If I'm not mistaken, around 15 items that you can fund, you know? And in fact, it has evolved again. Because right now, there are a number of joint circulars that were issued that right now states that, okay, the funds for the SEF can now be used for nutrition. It can now be used for daycare centers.
When you talk about circulars, this is DEX or DBM?
Yeah, DEEPED, together with DBM, together with ILG, you know, so joint circulars. So it evolves over time. And quite recently, you know, like, as I said, the fund can already be used for feeding programs.
Yes.
Yes, for nutrition. But it wasn't there, it wasn't even in the original intent.
This policy shift is already settled? There's still no internal debate ongoing?
Well, right now, there's no internal debate. Actually, I also chair the Nutrition Council, Nutrition Office. And I fully agree with that, because, you know, we serve the same constituency, the students, the children.
Yes.
And nutrition is actually the number one pillar in a child's.
Development?
Development, you know? There are four or five of them. You have nutrition, you have education, you have health, you have protection, and you have social protection. And among the five, nutrition is the number one. Because, you know, no amount of improving your educational system if you have malnourished children.
Yes, yes.
You know, they can understand the rigors of learning. So they're both interconnected, so there's no debate about that.
So people might get confused. You have the local school board, you have the DEX, Department of Education and Culture and Sports. So how do you look at the hierarchy and who's the boss? Is it the local school board with the city? Is it the Department of Education as well? How does the ordinary man look at this?
Okay, the dynamics here is this. For the DEEPED, okay, they have funds for each division. It's called the MOE.
Okay.
Okay, they have an MOE. And then from the division, it trickles down to the different schools.
Kindly tell the public what is MOE, I understand.
Okay, okay, okay. Maintenance and other operating expense.
Okay.
So, you know, the amount that you need to run a school, okay? Like, payment of electricity.
Yes.
Payment of water, also like little things. Like, right now, they need to print several modules.
Yes.
So they use part of their MOE for the printing. Of course, it's not enough, you know? Because, you know, this is too sudden for everyone. So local school board came in and did the printing, several tens of millions.
Augmentation?
Augmentation.
That's what the school boards?
Exactly, we augment.
Okay.
And at the same time, our funds is actually focused entirely, not entirely, but focused on the repair and maintenance of, you know, buildings, infrastructure.
Armchair, how about the chairs?
Even the chairs.
Blackboard?
Exactly, so everything. So, you know, they cannot, they cannot get it from their MOE. So that's where the local school board comes in. Plus some other stuff, of course, you know, so many things, you know? Like, I think I have to mention this.
Yes, yes.
This Monday, we launched the Education Laboratory and Radio. So this is the first of its kind, I believe, of this magnitude. Because, you know, we, our audience, we have about 200-plus thousand schoolchildren who are having difficulty, you know, studying their modules, navigating their modules. Can you imagine, a grade 3 pupil, he would have to read about 100 pages a day? And no one's there to teach him. Lucky for those who have parents who can teach them. But most of them actually would do it all by their lonesome. And in fact, we did a study, a survey, at the local school board on what is really affecting our schoolchildren right now. And we found out that the number one stressor for them is a module. Because they're expected to read, they're expected to understand, and they're expected to learn, and, you know, all by their lonesome. So it's very stressful for them.
You have nothing to do with the creation of the module?
We have nothing to do with it.
You just enable it?
Exactly.
Okay.
We just provide them with a platform.
Okay.
Okay, as far as the creation of the module is concerned.
That's DEX?
That's DEX. However, because our educational radio right now, it's actually pre-recorded. So you might want to listen to it, it's very good. I was blown away, it's actually beyond my expectation, our teachers now. So what do we do?
This is radio, you're talking about AM, FM, what is it?
FM.
It's on FM?
FM radio, yeah. And, you know, we did a lot of study first.
There is a pre-determined FM station already, which they'll tune in?
Oh, yeah, we actually went through the process, okay? Number one, we asked for, of course, the cost per hour, okay? Number two, we wanted a radio station that can give us eight hours of straight airtime, okay? And number three, their reach should be wide, okay? It doesn't make sense, they might have the same cost, but the reach is only half. We have about 80 barangays and only 40 barangays, children of these barangays can listen. So we did a propagation test. So we did that, you know, we had four different propagation tests. And we singled out one radio station who can do 90%. You know, you can never have 100%, so 90%. So there's about eight barangays that we need to look at differently or approach it differently. But we have 90% barangays who can be reached by this signal. And, of course, they were able to give us eight hours of straight airtime. So, and the price is the same. So, yeah, we have a radio station partner already for this. And I was really surprised, you know? And what we did is, for the materials coming from the teachers, it goes through a process of QA and QC.
What is QA and QC?
Yeah, quality assurance, you know, quality control. Because we want to make sure that what our children will be listening to are, you know, factual, you know, the delivery is right, etc., you know? And it had to go to the local school board also, because we wanted to help the DEEPED, the teachers, the teacher broadcasters, edit their audio. We put in the audio, we put in the music, we put in the OBB, you know?
So they became radio teachers?
Exactly, they're radio teachers, radio broadcasting instruction. So, and I was really surprised, you know? So, again, as I, we had a meeting this morning with all the teachers and supervisors, the teacher broadcasters. And, you know, I congratulated them, and I told them, this is a work in progress. It is only our first week, but, you know, the result is very good. We got very good feedback from students, from parents, telling us, wow, this is very helpful for us. And so that's where the local school board comes in. We provided the platform, we provided the station, and we helped them in the editing of the audio. And this coming March, what we're going to do is, we're going to have, conduct a training for the teacher broadcasters, so they themselves can already do the editing. And we will provide them with the equipment needed, so that each and everyone can already do the editing, so that we can provide them with all the materials that they would possibly need, you know?
Okay, I'll ask you, which station is this that you're referring to?
All right, now that you ask me.
Yeah, yeah.
It's Home Radio.
Home Radio.
106.7.
Home Radio 106.7.
That's right.
And then they go on 6 o'clock in the morning, 7?
No, 10 o'clock, because they have shows from 6 until 10 in the morning.
Okay.
So the available airtime that they have is from 10 in the morning till 6 in the evening.
Okay.
So that's for grades 1 to 6.
Okay, I leave you with this question, then we're going to pause for a few reminders. So if you're talking, let's say, about what are the modules? It's like grade 1 up to grade 5, grade 1 up to grade 7, within the eight hours that they're on broadcast? And then, how do you go up the grade levels in the radio broadcast when Republica returns? Okay, balikta sa'to programa ng Republica. Kahinabi lang yapon ato si Kwan Rady Jola, apili siya dinisa atong grupo nga ang Cebu City Local School Board. Okay. Very briefly, before you answer that question, you represent what in the local school board?
Okay, I represent the mayor.
The mayor?
As chairman of the local school board.
Okay. Later on, we'll go down the list, who are the people now involved? But to that question that I left hanging, how does grade 1, the entire module of grade 1, presented within, what, several hours? Or then it's grade 2, it's grade 3, how is it all interspersed?
Okay. Each module, you know, I mean, we've done this already. Each module would run for about 50 minutes to about an hour, okay? So each day would have a specific subject. Like, for instance, Monday, Monday is all English.
Okay.
So grade, let's say, grade 1 would be for 10 to 11, grade 2 and down the line.
Okay.
Yes, and we would intersperse it with math, because, you know, it's only six hours, because you have grade 1, 2, 3, and 6.
Yes.
So you still have two hours left. So we put in mathematics for a certain grade level. Now, Tuesday, that's another subject, and all the way down the line until Saturday. So that's how we do it. So it's 50 minutes of pre-recorded teaching, and I would encourage you to listen to it. You'll be pleasantly surprised, as I was.
And then the next day will be like, for example, all science subjects?
Exactly.
Okay.
All science subjects.
Of the different grade levels?
Exactly. So if you're grade 2 or 3, after your English subject, the 50 minutes or one hour, you have the entire day to review, to work on your module, on your test, etc., and then probably prepare for the next day, another subject.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, so they're not stressed. They have time to really review.
So aside from being stressed out on the modules, the children, our kids now, what other points, sore points are they experiencing? Loneliness, lack of interaction with teacher, with classmates? What are other findings?
Oh, you just said it, you know? I mean, while growing up as students, you know, one of the things we look forward to is meet up with their classmates.
Yes, yes.
Socialize with them, interact with them, you know, with their teachers, etc. So, of course, these are the things that they missed a lot, you know? That's why we're looking for ways on how, you know, how best to make their lives as normal as possible. Like, you know, we are supporting the Cebu City Sports Commission.
Yes.
We pay the allowances of coaches. So there are actually online competitions.
Okay.
In fact, we'll have, soon, we'll have this Krabol competition online. So children will be involved in that, you know? Last year, we had a dance competition online. You know, so these are the things we're doing to make their lives as normal as possible.
This is inter barangay, it's like a sports meet?
Inter barangay, actually, inter-school.
Inter-school?
Yeah, so it's inter-school.
Okay.
So these are the things we do to, you know, normalize their lives and prepare them when the old normal comes back, you know?
You talked about 200,000 students, that's basically the universe for Cebu City?
Yes, that's right.
That's right. And then how many, how many schools are there, more or less, around the city?
More or less, in the city, we have about 132 schools. That includes the high school.
Okay.
For the elementary, we have about 69, 69, 70 schools for elementary.
Okay, for purposes just of jurisdiction, you're just up to the high school level?
No, grade school and high school.
Grade school and high school?
That's right.
Okay, but you don't go higher, because that's already?
Yeah, that's already CHADL radio.
Okay, so right now, who actually composes the school board? That's you representing the mayor, who else? Who are the other?
The city division superintendent.
Is there?
Is there.
Okay.
We have the chairman of the Committee on Education, the city council.
Okay.
Chairman of the.
That's standard, that's standard for all?
Standard, yes.
Okay.
Chairman of the Committee on Youth. Again, the president of the general PTA, president of the non-teaching personnel of DEEPED, president of the teaching personnel. And, of course, we have the city treasurer and the city administrator. So that, in essence, comprises our school board.
And then you meet who, when, how?
Well, we meet once a month.
Once a month?
Well, it used to be twice a month.
Okay.
But right now, we meet through Zoom most of the time. So, yeah, we do meet regularly.
Okay. And then who sets the agenda, that's you?
Well, not me.
Not you?
It would depend on, you know, if there are issues that come along, then include that in the agenda. It could come from the DEEPED also.
Okay. But you call the order?
Yes, I do.
Because you're the, you're the chair, you know? Is that the proper term for that chair?
Yeah, chairman representative.
Okay. Uh-huh. And then, this number, does it increase, or it's a fixed number of individuals who participate, or?
Well, as far as the board is concerned.
It's fixed?
It's fixed.
Okay.
But, you know, we do invite resource persons when we have a meeting.
And then they have terms of office?
Yes.
Is there a term of office for all these individuals?
There is, yeah. For me, I'm called terminus with the mayor, of course. For the city superintendent, while she or he is the city superintendent, then she continues, or he continues to be there. The same with the president of the PTA. If they're replaced, then there's another personality.
Uh-huh. In this case, the chair of the Education Committee is the current vice mayor?
That's right.
Okay.
It used to be Councillor Tony Kuenco.
Okay, and then the one for sports is, who is it?
Ah, no, for the youth, that's Jessica Rush.
Ah, it's Jessica Rush, for youth?
That's right.
Okay, for sports, no, no area there for sports?
No area for sports.
Although it's one of the concerns of the.
Right, yeah, that's right. That's why we're supporting sports really right now.
Okay.
Especially when, you know, the other annual sports activity, like you have the City Olympics, you have the Civiraa, you have all these sports activity. And this has been, of course, because of the physical distancing. So we are making do with what we have, like, online.
But when you entered into this as the chairperson, you had an idea of where you want to to bring the local school board?
Yes, yes.
I'm sure there's something in your heart that is burning, that you wanted to come out and that this could be part of your legacy.
Exactly.
When you're all considering this, what was your number one priority?
Okay. Before the pandemic, okay, of course, we didn't think about education radio, you know? My main goal at that time is, okay, how do we, of course, it should answer the question, how do we help decongest our mother's schools now? You know, it's really congested, you know? And number two, how do we bring the schools closer to the children?
When you mean decongest, you're talking about the general population, including the classroom size?
Right, right. So our goal, in fact, that's what we're going to do, because we weren't able to do that last year, is to build schools in barangays that don't have them.
Okay.
Okay, like, for instance, Ermita.
Okay.
Ermita, they have a school there, but their mother's school is city central, okay? So when that school was built, okay, the students from Ermita don't have to go to city central, because the school is right at their doorstep. So effectively, you decongested city central, and you bring the school closer to the children. Now, right now, we're finishing already the school in Larega. So children in Sapatera who are from Larega don't have to go to Sapatera, because the school will be open pretty soon in Larega. So that's what we're doing now, you know? We have identified already areas without any high school or grade school, or both, and put a school there, you know? So that children, you know, it would be closer to the children, okay?
Closer to home, closer to parents?
Closer to home, closer to parents, less accident, because they don't have to crisscross busy streets.
And they go home early?
They go home early, they don't spend so much.
Yes.
Because it's very near. And, you know, they're more relaxed. So that was our, but unfortunately, last year, we were only able to ground break on three, four schools. But this time, by marching order to the people.
This is barangay level already?
Barangay level.
Very clearly, yes.
Like, for instance, we broke ground in San Jose.
Okay.
Barangay San Jose, in Sapang Daco, and then Kinasangan, and Mambaling.
Okay.
Okay, so this year, we're adding more. And hopefully, by middle of this year, we would have already contracted out 10 schools in 10 different barangays. So that is our process. You know, it's not as simple as just putting up an infrastructure. There's a lot of things that you need to do.
Preparation?
In fact, first, you need to do a feasibility study, okay? Because you have to send it to DEEPED, DEEPED has to approve it. Because, you know, DEEPED has to shell out extra amounts, you know? And that's why you need to show this feasibility to DEEPED, you know?
Is it a matching fund, or is it based on a percentage?
Yeah, they will have to, because it will have to be, well, initially, they will still be under the ages of their mother's school, okay? But eventually, they will have to operate independently. So that's why there has to be a, you know, funding MOE support from the national government. So we actually did this feasibility study already. So we actually did this feasibility study already for more than ten barangays. So we're ready with that.
Is there, was there any specific reasons why these first ten barangays were chosen?
Well, the reason there, number one is, number one is that, like, availability of land.
Okay.
You know, the land cost right now in Cebu City is, you know, has gone skyrocketed, no?
Yeah.
So that's, that's one, no? Number two would be, well, the beauty here, Eric, is that when we did this, we redesigned our school buildings, okay? Because before, when you say put up a school, you need to have large tracts of land, an area that's large enough, no? At least five thousand, six thousand square meters, no? But we redesigned our school buildings in a way where you don't really need a big space. Our redesigned school building, because every time you build on an open space, you actually deprive a child of that open space.
Yes.
And open space is very important. So what did we do? We redesigned it wherein that open space actually moved up.
Okay.
So there's a roof deck there, fully secured, where children can play, where, you know, events can be done. If you have a twenty-classroom building, we only need less than five hundred square meters of footprint to build a twenty-classroom building. So, you know, twenty-classroom building, less than five hundred, of course, you need a little more for parking space or what have you. So you don't really need a big space. A thousand square meters or even less, you can already build a school building in that barangay. And you still have open space up there. Five hundred square meters of footprint means five hundred square meters of open space up there.
I'll ask you this question. In, like, for example, in other countries, the roof deck, it really is, you know, there is really no roof. It's like, it's like an open gymnasium, basketball, volleyball. In our case, do we put a roof over it?
We will put a roof over it because it's a multipurpose area, no?
It can be a stadium, that's-
It can be a stadium.
For graduation, whatever.
Exactly, and it can also be a feeding center.
Okay.
You know, because we do a lot of feeding for children. So that being the case, part of which guru will have a roof over their heads, no?
How many stories?
Four stories.
Four stories?
Yes, four stories. So that's a configuration. We have a four-twelve building, four stories, twelve classrooms, four sixteen, four twenty, yeah.
And then, this is actually the standard, this is actually the model of what we are building in all this, more or less, in the ten barangays?
Right, right, exactly. And it's solar-powered?
Solar-powered?
Yes. The buildings are solar-powered, and we want to make sure that before we even start building, we should have a building permit. Because that has not been followed, you know, and I'm, you know, deeply frustrated with, you know-
The building permit?
The building, no, the building permit is okay.
Yes, but?
But before, before.
It was difficult?
They would build buildings without any building permit whatsoever. So we're very strict right now, you know, I came up with a policy, I said, you know, the local school board is a steward of all these schools.
Yes.
So we want to make sure, we want to plan out, we should have a master plan, that, you know, every time you put up a structure, it should be consistent with the plan. Right now, voila, you know, they make the plans somewhere outside of the city and then send someone here, implement it, look for the open space. And that's why you see our schools with different configurations. You don't understand how it was done.
You're talking about standardization?
Standardization, yeah, and consistency also. So, yeah, that's why we're quite busy right now with the local school board. So each of the school that we have are actually planned right now.
Okay, okay, just hold on to that.
Yes, sir.
We're going to pause for a few reminders again. And then I'll leave a hanging question. Why only now? Shouldn't have this been done a long time ago? I mean, I can already see the projection of where the local school board is and where Rady Jola is going, and I feel so sad. It should have been done a long time ago when Republica returns. Okay, nagbabalik po ang ating programa Republica. Ako perinpo si Eric Espina. Kausaparinpo natin si, you know, Rady Jola sa atipong Cebu City Local School Board. We have standardized, there is now consistency. In short, there's a model that if you intend to build in future other barangays, and hopefully, under whatever administration, they'll be following this model. But why only now? Why, please tell us, what's the head and tails of this? Why only now?
Well, like what you said, hopefully, you know, it will be followed. You know, I realize, I'm actually from the private sector.
Yes, yes.
I'm just helping out the administration, no? I realize that the biggest enemy really is, you know, when politics would rear its ugly head, you know, you might have a good program on the ground, but if another administration comes in, then it all changes, no? It stops. So that's a sad reality. Because, you know, I was already chair of the local school board in two thousand fifteen. And, of course, after that, there was a new administration. And when I came back, well-
Things changed?
Some things changed, yeah.
For the worst? So is that the right way to say it?
Yeah, some things changed.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's what, one of the things that I wanted to do, and, you know, the mayor asked me to chair the board again, was to have us undergo an ISO accreditation, you know, so that we'll have a standard system and an ISO and a system that probably would be in an ordinance, you know, so that it becomes law, becomes standard. Because it's so frustrating when you start these things and you come back and you have to do things again. So, yeah, that's a reason, that's a reason why, that's why I had to, you know, the policy I told you about, I actually issued that in two thousand fourteen yet.
And then what happened?
And of course-
It was changed?
I don't really, it was not changed, but it was not probably followed.
Okay.
It's a different, go ahead. So, like, before we left, before I left in two thousand fifteen, at that time, there was so much activity on the ground because of the, you know, the preparation for the K plus twelve. And, you know, K plus twelve, the funding of the buildings come from national, it's being implemented by DPWH. And, you know, first things I told DPWH is that you should have coordinated with the local school board because we have a plan for each school, okay? So we can tell you where exactly you can put up the building, no?
By law, they are the ones actually supposed to be constructing all this, no?
Yeah, if the funds, yeah, coming from the national.
Yeah, yeah.
And I also told them that, you know, before your contractors, because we're not involved in the process at all, the local school board, and that's a sad part because we're not involved in this process. But after they turn over the building, we're supposed to repair and maintain.
Yes.
And, you know, there are instances, in many instances, where after a few short weeks or a few short months, we're already called to repair a structure.
Badly built?
That was recently, you know, transferred.
Poor standard, substandard?
Exactly, so that's why I told them that time, that, you know, I would also insist that your contractors should get a building permit. And, you know, I was surprised that they said, can they do that after the building is constructed?
Ah, constructed, yeah.
And to my mind, I said, you know, you're supposed to be the one to insist on a building permit.
Yes.
Because that's in the building code, which you're supposed to enforce. So those are the frustrations that one can get, no? And, you know, you only have three years, and in fact, less than three years, to do all these things. So it's, we're running, you know, running out of, we're running after time, no? So, so those are the little frustrations.
Your yearly budget would be like about, just give us, you know, a figure where we can wrap our head around it, more or less, in order to make all these plans?
In two thousand twenty, our budget was about six hundred, six hundred fifty million. But this year, it's only about three hundred thirty.
Okay.
Because, you know, as I've said, we got our funds from the real property tax. You know, people are having some difficult times now. So we worked around that three hundred thirty million budget, yeah.
But this is just an idea. It is not an original idea, but maybe the mayor could ask the business sector if you advance pay for the next three years, you'll get a little discount, but the city can collect also in advance already all the, all that real estate taxes for the next two or three years. I don't know if that's feasible, but so that you can work with a bigger budget.
Yeah, that's feasible, but of course, if they advance it for three years, that means that for the next two, three years, you'll get less amounts because, yeah.
You might have a liquidity problem, that's why it's better to advance the amount and then plan for the next three years based on that, on that budget. Even allowances, adjustments, emoluments for teachers, that's also under you?
No, for, because we give annual financial assistance to teachers.
Yes, yes.
But it's not one of those that's contemplated under the law, no? So that's why the financial assistance for teachers actually come from the general fund.
General fund, okay.
That's right.
Ah, and then when you talk about, well, very important, maintenance, construction, how is that done? I mean, do you plan like six months before budget cycle? Is it August?
Yeah.
It's August, no? So you plan six months before that? Because some people don't do that, no? They, they want to compile everything and then in just one swoop, that's when they do. But how do you undertake this? Every time there's, there's need for maintenance and new construction, you right away move into that project?
Right. Well, the first time I took over the helm of the local school board, I would get emails, calls from principals requesting for several bags of cement, requesting for several plywood for, you know, all this stuff. And I felt like, I felt like I was a hardware store.
Hardware store, yes, yes.
Who called me and then, so I said, you know, we have to change this, we have to be proactive. So what I did that time, and until now, I revived it, is I have engineers and they're assigned to particular clusters of schools. And then, of course, they talk with the principals, they come up with a wish list, okay? And the principal, the engineer will be there to guide them also. And based on that, put in their priorities on what they would wish for, what they want to improve, no? And based on that, each engineer will come up with their program of works and estimate. And we compile all of them, we add all of them, then we would know exactly how many sacks of cement do we need for next year, how many plywood, how many doors, how many, you know, things like that, so that we can prepare already. Now, understandably, there are certain repairs and maintenance that you will need, that's not part of the plan. Like, for instance, if there's a typhoon, something happens, so we put in extra for that, we put in extra for that. So, you know, we, our engineers, especially right now, where there is no school, there are no students, my marching order for the engineers is go to the schools, make sure you fix whatever you can fix there, put in the drainage, put in, you know, the fences and all.
What's the most common problem? I mean, damage to this, construction for this, maintenance for that? What is the usual top of the list that is common to everybody?
What is common is, well, number one, water.
No water?
No water. We have to develop water sources, and we're doing that. Of course, comfort rooms, you know, some substandard work.
When it's turned over to you?
Yes, when it's turned over. That's why I told the principals right now, don't accept anything that's turned over unless we put in our acceptance also, the local school board.
Yes.
Because we're never part of it, no?
Yes.
As I've said, we're never-
And then they'll end up blaming you?
They'll end up, yeah, you know, and we end up picking up the pieces, you know, fixing everything.
And repairing may even cost more than just the original construction?
Exactly. So right now, I really insist on that, no? Because before, it was only the principal who would accept, and that's it, and I, you know. But right now, I said, no, the local school board should be involved. We should do the punch listing, meaning to say, you know, if we look at the, and we see some, some, something that needs to be done, then they have to do it, and we have to finally accept it. Okay, so, so those are the things, my experience. So top of the list would be that. And then, of course, the lights, the cabling we need to repair, we need to replace a number of cables.
Electricity is decks?
The payment for the electricity, yes, is decks. But, you know, the cabling, the lights, it's local school board, you provide that.
Okay.
So we have to replace also the lights, no? Like, if your one consumes a hundred watts and we can replace it with a twelve watt with the same intensity, then we do that.
Pamphlets can be yours? Laboratory is also yours?
Yes, we help them with the laboratory, yes. In fact, if not for the pandemic, we would have probably started a robotics laboratory in schools with STEM, science and technology. So, yeah, laboratory would be ours also.
Yeah, are you planning to put up in the mountains some barangay schools as well?
In the mountains, their problem is not so much on congestion.
Okay.
Okay, so that's why our focus is more on the urban. Yeah, as far as putting up new buildings are concerned, no? But we do, we do have mountain barangays that we put up new schools for. In fact, for the K plus twelve, there are new school buildings there.
How about extension classes? I mean, is that, that's also part of the school board, no?
Yes.
Voktech, is that also included?
Yes, we also help for Voktech, we also help for the ALS.
Alternative learning?
Alternative learning system. So whatever we can do to have the DEEPED.
What happens now under COVID? Some of the schools are being used for, you know, during fire, during earthquake or whatever, and then for, I don't know, maybe for vaccine, vaccination centers? They're talking about using schools for vaccinations. How will that work out?
Okay, for, you know, when we were faced already with a, with a prospect of having increased number of infected patients here in Cebu, we were helping, actually, the IETF, the EOC, put up the first barangay isolation center in Barilus Elementary School. So since we know the area, we identified which rooms can be converted, we put in all the necessary, the requisite things, like water system, how do we provide them with the food, without, you know, minimize any contacts whatsoever, and fix the toilet and all. So we were involved. The local school board was actually very busy last year, putting up all these barangay isolation center and building over a thousand beds. We actually, yeah, we fabricated the beds, no? Because it's needed, and we had to work fast. So during that time, we were actually very busy, you know? We even helped in putting up isolation centers in the Cebu City Medical Center, the PNP, putting up the Cebu City Quarantine Center in the North Reclamation.
Just to be clear, this is the local school board doing this?
Yes, yes, because we need to help out, yeah, every, all hands on deck already at that time.
Okay.
And we had the skills, we had the people who can do that, the commitment and the passion, no? So we were there, you know, we had to help out.
Are their principals who are resistant sometimes? They worry about who's going to pay for the electricity, the use of electricity? Damages to property, public property. How do you, how do you handle these issues?
Actually, I would understand, you know, the principals, because, you know, it's like their second home, the school, you have to take care of that, no? So that's why whenever you use a barangay isolation, at a school, as a barangay isolation center or evacuation center, like the one in Bulakau, the barangay or whoever is responsible on the ground has to sign an undertaking. It's a very simple undertaking.
It's like a MOA?
Yeah, something like a MOA, like, you know, what are the rules and responsibility, what is expected of you, the aftercare, what do you do, you know, as far as security is concerned, and then, of course, the health protocol, et cetera. And they said, you know, about what about the electricity and the water? So the resistance there initially would be the payment of electricity and water. So the local school board came in and we said, you know, we'll take care of that. If that school is used for that purpose, we will, we will take care of the electricity and the water, you know? So, you know, so that would eliminate any, whatever resistance there would be. So, but I do agree that, you know, there has to be an undertaking. You know, the barangay should- You know, the barangay should take responsibility.
Damage, how about damage to property, that's also included in the undertaking?
I'm concerned there, because every time there's a damage, it's a local school board to fix us that.
Yes, yes.
So I'm really concerned about that also, and that's why I would like that, you know? There's one barangay, a principal complained of the damage, even the losses, and then the garbage that piled up, you know, so that's why I, I support having that undertaking. We're the barangay concerned, and the school.
It's the, it's the local school board who ends up paying for it, not so much the barangay per se?
Right, right, we, we end up paying for it, because we need to fix it, we need to repair, we need to maintain, you know? Even before it's turned into a evacuation center, isolation center, we're there already. As I've said, we have to repair, we have to fix, we have to prepare, even fabricate beds, you know? So, that's a role, and in fact, when there's fire and you need to use a school as evacuation center, one of the, are the frontliners is actually the local school board, why? Because we prepare the room, we prepare the gym, we even mobilize mobile kitchens, mobile shower rooms. So we're like the, the special force, you know, we're sent there before the people would come in. So we're, we're actually a frontliner as far as that is concerned.
I'll ask this of you, Rady, do you think we should change already that, that mindset, that policy, where every time there's a fire, there's an earthquake, they always make use of schools as the evacuation centers? What's your view on this?
Actually, ideally, there should be an evacuation center really, you know, for, for these types of, you know, these things, you know, this calamity, ideally, I would, I would like that, you know? But there, there are certain things also, well, you know, there is no other option, if there's no other option, the school is there. But again, if there are classes, it's very difficult to balance it, you know? Right now, it's a little bit easier, because there are no classes.
Yeah, COVID and everything?
Yeah, because of COVID, so, you know, it's not really a problem, but if classes are going on, it's very difficult, you know? Of course, the principals would have some resistance, what would happen, you know? We will have to displace our students, especially if you're talking about a thousand people, evacuees.
So our students, our children will really get displaced when you, it's turned into an evacuation center?
Yeah, but you know, the thing is, is that most of these children are actually evacuees themselves, as they live within a closer area of the school, you know? So, yeah, so, yeah, children are really affected. But it would be ideal to have an evacuation site.
Separate from?
Separate from, yeah.
From schools, so, right now, since there's hardly any movement inside our schools, you're more focused now on construction, not so much on the maintenance? There are lesser costs for maintenance, because there's lesser where and there? Is that, is that how the proportion is going?
Actually, I would say we're busier now, because you know, while the children are not there, our, our goal is really to fix what needs to be fixed now. Don't wait for it to, you know, so that's why all our engineers, we have already identified what to do in this particular school. In fact, hopefully, we'll receive already the heavy equipment we purchased, like the backhoe loader, because we will have to already address the, the drainage problems of these schools, you know? And that's what we've been doing when we started in 2019. But, you know, we, we have to do that now, while the children are not there, fix the roof, you know, the water system, electrical system, we, we need to change the electrical system. Of course, the fencing for some, some even the rip wrapping of walls. So we're quite busy, you know, that's why we.
There's not enough time?
There's not enough time.
And not enough money as well?
Yeah, but you know, with the plans that we have, we can make do with what we have now. And of course, as I've said, we have, we have funds already, it's a capital expenditure, which we weren't able to expand last year to build ten schools in the different barangays this year, so that's a marching order. And of course, the ed radio, education radio, we were focused on that also.
Well, that's, that's the full hour with our guest, Rady Jola. At least we were able to get the direction, the visioning, and I really have to commend him for this ten new barangays with, with this kind of a, a concept, you know, 412, 416. Hopefully, this will cascade down to all the other barangays that are heavily congested. And I think we have the right man doing it, as long as things don't change again for what has been established, so I bid you good luck, and you're doing a great job.
Thank you.
You're doing a great job, and I'm sure the parents will, will agree with me on that, and good luck also in this radio education.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, pioneering. So, 'yan po kabuan ang ating isang oras, wala na po tayong panahon. Hanggang po sa susunod na pagkakataon sa Sabado muli, ito po si Eric Espina, palagi nagsasabi, magmasid, makialam, higit sa lahat ay manindigan, dahil wala pong magmamahal sa Pilipino kung hindi ang Pilipino. Daghang salamat, mahinggabi, karin 'yong tanan.